Those of our citizens there that are high-risk patients and our elders, we ask you to come and join the food distribution at 1:00 PM at Torreon Chapter House. Our updates for this week is our alternative care sites. One is complete today. The one in Shiprock, New Mexico will be going online because it's complete. We're going to be Vice President Myron Lizer and I are going to be out there signing the documents because it's going to get turned over from FEMA and Army Corps of Engineers and the National Guard who helped build this. They're going to give us the keys to it and we're going to be developing the wraparound services as they call it that includes staff for that site. And it's going to be a smaller version of a hospital and a clinic for those positive COVID positive patients. The one in Chinley, Arizona will be complete by Monday. Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday it'll be complete and we're ready to rock and roll on that site on Monday. So we've got two alternative care sites, alternative facilities that are built. It costs $4 million to construct those temporary facilities, but you know, it's better to be safe than sorry. You know, I know some of you are going to be saying, "Well, why now? It's been how many weeks now?" Let me just say that we're finally getting resources coming into the Navajo Nation to help put these sites up throughout the Navajo Nation. And so those are going to be ready to go this week and next week. The one in Gallup at the Mi'amura School Gymnasium is currently online right now. We do have volunteers, bless their hearts for coming to the Navajo Nation. We have nurses and doctors who came and staff, actually sports staff, who came from California, from San Francisco, the University of California, San Francisco, and they're here to assist these alternative care facilities throughout the Navajo Nation. But we are asking, there's a call-out right now, those that are off the nation or viewing elsewhere, you know, there's an opportunity to come and serve. But as always, you know, we always start with the prayer. Our Vice President Myron Lizer will do the prayer and then he'll give his introductory remarks and then we'll go to our Vice President of Pueblo Pantano, Earlene Henderson, and she's here right now and she'll give us an update. And she's got a lot of items here that the chapter provided. So I know there's a lot of questions out there saying, "Where's our share?", right? But remember, we're helping out those that are less fortunate here, our elders and our high-risk patients. And you know, the chapter here stepped up and man, what a blessing that is for the chapter. The chapter wishes to be out here on the front line as well. Here's our Vice President to start us off with a word of prayer and his opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commit our work and we will be successful. So Lord, we do that. We submit this to work to you, Lord Father, of giving necessary supplies, of giving care packages and food and water, Lord Father, to those that need it now. Lord, we pray that you would bring to us those, Father, that are wondering where tonight's meal is going to come from or where tomorrow's water is going to come from. Lord, and I pray you bring them in now from the east, the north-south, and east and the west. Lord, we thank you again. You protect us, Lord. We pray for more protection for our population, Lord Father. Everyone, you know us all, Lord Father. We thank you again. We just ask for your blessing on this, Lord, and continue to help us, Lord Father. Help others and, Lord, to lift up the name of Jesus, Father. We thank you again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Our President is right. There's a lot of things going on. We see a long line of cars here picking up supplies and water and some other necessary resources. But one thing we want to let you know is that, you know, we're all in this together. Yesterday, we were in Black Falls, Grand Falls area of Western Agency, north of Loop, and today we're on the eastern side. From one side of Navo to the other, we just want to get out there and encourage all of our people here, you know. I know we can't be every place at, you know, at this time, but we're certainly trying. So much prayers for all those and thankfulness for all the people that lay hand to this work, you know, from Garrett, our Director of Navajo Department of Transportation, all the way down to Department of Health and the CHRs and the chapter officials and all those people that donated, right? Our Creator gives seed to the sower and so as they sow into this good work, we just pray that they're blessed 10, 30, 100-fold. And so I just want to give an update right now from the Office of the President, Vice President. Yesterday, President Trump had named Tyler Fish and revived the White House Council on Native American Affairs. Tyler Fish will lead this council. In addition to leading COVID-19 inter-agency response coordination within Indian country, the council will help drive the administration policy priorities supporting Indian countries, including economic development and rural prosperity, energy development, infrastructure, public health, cultural resources, and workforce development, and education, and also public safety and veterans affairs. So this council is chaired by the Secretary of the Interior and includes major executive agencies and senior White House leadership. So the council was established to provide improved coordination of federal programs and the use of resources available to tribal communities. So Office of the President, Vice President Jonathan Nez and Myron Lizer, we send our best to Tyler Fish. Congratulate him. And we will start working with him Monday, I guarantee you. I promise you. We've already reached out to him and just congratulated him. But we also want him to know that the Navajo Nation, we do have all of these needs for projects, namely water, right? Thirty-six percent of our people don't have water. We want to help escalate those projects, bring water to all those that don't have it. Power, infrastructure, also broadband, you know. This pandemic has shown us a great need for broadband, especially for our children coming home from colleges and high schools, the need to have broadband on this year. So we just need to advocate for it. So congratulations again to Tyler Fish here and we just want to again commend this great scene of people helping people, right? Those less fortunate, but also just encouraging our people that, you know, we're all in this together. So right now, I'm going to bring up the Vice President of the Pueblo Pantano Chapter here and if you would, just come on in and just take over like I know you're not happy. Carolina.
That's it. Ben, that's Earlene with Pueblo Pantano Vice President. I just want to say thank you to Office of President, Navajo Nation President, Office of Vice President, and INDOT, they're helping out. And then our own crew from Pueblo Pantano Fire Department. Thank you for your help. I really appreciate that. Then we have our CHR. So we got some donation, donation from St. Mary's and then National Guard. So we got all these stuff from Standing Rock Staging Center. We got some food and water. And this morning, we got more stuff from Office of President, Navajo Nation. They brought some words.
Carolina, Earlene Henderson. I want to say thank you to the Vice President. You know, I want to say thank you to Garrett Silversmith and his team from the Navajo Department of Transportation. Paul Wood from Albuquerque for the citizens here. I know it's warming up, but it's still cold in the morning. But some of the people here are getting some firewood to keep everyone warm. It's still cold in the morning. So I want to say thank you once again to our Vice President of Pueblo Pantano Chapter, Earlene Henderson. And in a little bit, we're going to talk to the CHR, a community health representative who is on the front line right now helping out with everything that she and the social services are doing for our people. Her name is Peyton Walletto. She's from here and helping out in the work that the social service is doing for our citizens. But before that, I'm going to get some time over to Garrett Silversmith here. Garrett, come on over. Tell us about your team. Maybe give them a shout out individually. I know you've got a lot of staff. Not to put you on the spot. I know sometimes we don't know all the names of them, especially a big organization like INDOT. Here's Garrett Silversmith.
Thank you, President Nez and Vice President Lizer. We are here in Pueblo Pantano, New Mexico. And as you can see in the background, we're here assisting the local community with distributing firewood. So a big need out here any time of the year. Firewood can be used, of course, to cook our fires and cook our food, aside from keeping us warm. But we have with me my division, hard-working group of individuals. So we are loading up some trucks and giving out food supplies, materials, and so forth. So we'll be out here for maybe one or two more hours. Then from here, we're advancing to Torreon, New Mexico. But the wood is coming from Lee's Landscaping from Albuquerque. So with their generosity and just thinking about the Navajo Nation, they provided this wood. So I want to thank you especially to Office of the President, Vice President, President Nez, Vice President Lizer out here helping out with the communities on Eastern Agency. So tomorrow, this afternoon, we're going to remain in Eastern Agency. So great need across the Navajo Nation. So we're glad to be a part of it. Again, I'm Garrett Silversmith, glad to be a part of it here with the Navajo Nation and the President, doing a good deed and helping out everybody as we battle this COVID-19. Thank you and have a good day, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Peyton Walletto. I am the CHR for Pueblo Pantano. And I am here today helping the Navajo Nation President and his office distribute food, firewood, and water to the community of Pueblo Pantano. I have been on the go since this whole coronavirus started. I'm going door-to-door, providing health education. I'm telling people to stay home and not to go anywhere, to practice social distancing, to wear face masks, gloves, disinfect everything, all their belongings, their homes. So I just want to say thank you to Navajo Nation President and Vice President for helping out my community today. I'm very thankful. And that was all that I have. Thank you to everyone who has been helping today.
All right. We will be headed to Torreon after this, 1:00. I know that there's a lot of concerned citizens out there saying, "What about this community? What about that community?" We just wanted to highlight a partnership here in Pueblo Pantano with the local chapter officials, the local CHRs, and our Navajo Department of Transportation and Navajo Nation employees helping out a rural community. I know many of you said, "What about Eastern Agency?" We heard you and we're going to go to Torreon later this afternoon. Tomorrow, we'll be in Pascenti, I'm sorry, Nyezi, right? Nyezi tomorrow. And we'll be in one more other community. We haven't yet, close to Nyezi tomorrow. We have yet to pin that down because of the social, the CHR on that area. On Friday, we are doing the Elderly Day, the Senior Citizens Day for the Bashes supermarkets out there. You'll be seeing a lot of our staff from the executive branch out there, just like we did the first-of-the-month operation last month. We're going to be doing this again. Bashes will be open from 6:00 to 10:00 AM exclusively for our elders and our high-risk patients tomorrow. And so come and take advantage of that time. We'll do our very best to clean everything. You know, I mean, it's hard to clean the whole supermarket, but they're going to be doing that the night before, but we have to keep it clean, especially when people come in and out of that community. So JT will be giving you an update on that in a little bit about the first-of-the-month operation. JT Willie has been doing an outstanding job in facilitating this and there's just so many of our cabinet members that have been doing great. It is a public health emergency right now and once we start opening back the government, we're going to do it in phases. This weekend is a full curfew, 57-hour. I mean, it's really up to all of us. If we want our Navajo Nation to open back up, let's all help each other to flatten the curve and so that we can begin to open back up our nation. It's still, the numbers still going up. I know that there are people also wanting to know who has been covered. There has been a president, a former council delegate, Leonard associate. I'm going to give some time to him so he can give us an update of what we're doing and, you know, in the bigger picture of looking at federal funds coming in and how we're monitoring that because of all these various pots of monies that are available now, especially those that are hard-hit like businesses. So give some time over to Mr. Leonard, Office of the Cabinet. So, give some time over to Mr. Leonard, office member.
Thank you, President. And I appreciate the discussion about the subject. The president's office and Navajo Nation departments have worked hard together to gather information and data to submit to the U.S. Treasury. And that is because Congress appropriated 8 billion and other monies to help with this COVID-19 relief. So, and then, but what happened was that then some corporations in Alaska wanted some of that. So, the president gave instruction to be involved in a lawsuit. We just heard that the other day that the tribes won on their case, and so we're waiting for that. When that money comes in, I don't doubt that the president and the executive staff and the executive branch will put a plan together to address the telecommunication, to address the infrastructure, to address other COVID-19 needs to combat this coronavirus. So, and that's what we're doing. And then, what we see out here at Pueblo Pantano are real rural chapters, ultra rural. And people live like one mile apart. And so, you know, they're all sheltered in place, many of them, about 80%, 80% of people, and we thank them. 80% of the people are sheltered in place. And it's the 20% that are still wandering around and kind of not behaving. It has been shown at the social distance. It has been shown by other countries, by the states and others, that if you shelter in place, stay at home, you begin to lessen the spread of coronavirus. This is why the president is so insistent upon that. So, in these rural areas, we're finding that this virus is coming into these rural areas. And so, it's real important. Ebini gi, kikado, chadchada di, na, alse di san Navajo, koro yanao kan, tina, ta. Edi digi, do da, ishi, chadchaddeho, do da, lha, kinchahona, itchahoho. Eyya, arro, ah, wanis, ro, zizchadu, khatah, challiago. Edi, allaih, cha, jich, allaih, wanhasagi, chaltegi, ro, atashni, la, allaih, anjachah. Akko, ta eyya, di digi, cha, ishi, tshoitini, bahna, no, le, bich dashni, coronavirus. Edi, digi eyya, ayah, whati. Ko, di, la, bahaski, da, kon, le, seel, irizun, omaz, or, na, ke, chudahon, ni, di, cha, ches, zol, i, enti, arro, nda, i, cha, shinsol, khatah walla, arro, nda, i, ya, di, ye, bie, nda, hi, dizi, gi, da, ilchiho. Ebini gi, atah, so, chi, di, ni, do, ebini, kro, ngephe, si, yana, kon, ka. Alab, na, ne, in, khatah, dhahui, do, allaih, ge, ro, ni, zen, da. Nchha, jini, pa, wa, nichi, di, ni, kon, ba, na, in, ka, na, ta, ni, ya, nda, oh, ka. Arro, anle, yo, thore, na, do, na, ta, ni, yana, oh, ka, ni, we, hos, do, de, khah, hos. So, ish, do, ah, de, la, sas, ta, ah, tsko, ya, nda, oh, ka, kon, ebina, ko, eh, ye, ya, di, chizdo, chi, yana, ona, lax, zen, de, di, chahno, president. Akko, ta, di, di, yana, ke, do, ta, na, ah, eya, na, ne, in, kika, nda, chah. Do, bela, kan, da, in, kika, nda, chah. Arro, nahan, da, mesi, ro, nha, da, si, Navajo Nation, eh, ko, ta, nda, chah. Eti, shi, kore, president, kore, eh, panaga, arro, zon, ah, ka, ri, ta, ne, hi, si, ro, ah, de, basa, na. Ero, ke, dashni, kon, so, ro, ke. Thank you, president.
All right, well, thank you, Leonard associate, kado, eh, kon, veshpa, san, do, de, kushina, kado, kon, eh, nichi, ke, do, kon, nichi, na, da, eh. Uh, uh, bah, uh, ishi, da, ni, da, n, zenige, na, hi, dan, spells, and so, zenigo, eh, kado, nichi, henzi, ro, ke, nkan, ndo, ro. Arro, kado, eh, nahan, nash. You know, again, we're going to be going out and turning this time back over to the studio, if you want to call it, back in Winderock, back in headquarters. I want to say thank you to all the folks who donated. There's a long list of donations that are being given to our Navajo citizen. And we're just trying to get them out as quick as we can. And thank you so much for the heart that you have for the Navajo people. And you got like folks like the Christian Response Team, who is also starting to help us out with cleaning supplies. Those Clorox being handed out and cleaning supplies here for people at their home so that they can keep everything disinfected and clean. So, I want to say thank you to the Christian Response Team. They're doing their very best to get those items here at these distribution sites. Also, you know, you got Coca-Cola, you got World Vision, you got even the chapters, that's your money. Chapter officials, there's some food that they're handing out. So, it's great to see people coming together. But let me just also say that we also need to help each other out. Maybe during this time, we probably saw comments saying, what about this community? What about that community? Now, there are local resources. We appropriated dollars to the local chapter and the chapter officials to help out with this. And the council delegates are out there as well. And we want to also acknowledge them for doing the best that they can in their communities. We're such a large nation, 110 chapters, 27,000 square miles of land. That's where we as citizens really should be able to step up and help one another during this time. You know, we have a lot of stories of people helping each other out during this time. And I want to say thank you. I can't say thank you enough to our citizens out there for helping our elders, helping the most vulnerable population and being able to show the love and compassion that we have for one another. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And so, we're going to turn the time over to the folks back in Winderock. And I think it's going to be Dr. Fowler that's going to be up next. I just wanted to show you this face shield, you know, that was made. You saw vice president with one. We were, it was donated to us from G I M C Medical Center. I guess someone donated it to G I M C. And they got their face masks that follow protocol. So, they gave us these so that we can use them out here. As you can see, we're using our personal protection equipment. And if you can see over there on that side, this is no-contact distribution. So, if they have a hatchback or a camper, what we do is we just put the items over there and then they put it in there in their vehicles themselves. If they have a truck like this or a trunk, car trunk, then we'll help put the items in there. So, if there's an elderly that has a hatchback or a car that has the open air in it and an elder is there, what we'll do is we'll suit up and then we'll help put the items in their vehicle because they can't put it in themselves. So, we're doing everything we can to protect ourselves here. I just want to let you know that we've been trained. We do a lot of these trainings right at the beginning to remind all of our staff to take care of themselves. We got our gloves, we got our masks, and helping our people out. So, thank you so much. And I'm going to, it might get a little fuzzy, but I'm going to bring you over and then we'll shoot it back over to the headquarters back in Winderock. Come on over. So, as you see, people are lined up here. We get their credentials, meaning we get their information so that we track those donations. And then they come in, one at a time, people come in. And if they get, you see vice president here with the Clorox and cleaning supplies that were donated by Christian Response Team. We got Rick Gravant there with the food boxed up, and Marwin as well, and Leo. I think that's Adam in the back putting the food in. We got wood going in the vehicles here. You got the chapter officials giving out food, the vice president earlier, the C H Rs. You got Leonard associate over there as well. So, it's pretty unified, the process in place, it goes around, comes through here, and they're right back in the road, no contact as much as we can. I'd say 99% of the time. Sometimes people do roll their windows down and we say, roll them back up. But we're doing our very best to protect us and our staff as well. So, with that said, thank you so much. That's our update here from Pueblo Pantano. This is our forum that we do every week. I know we didn't do one yesterday. We were out there in Grand Falls area, and then we were in Delcon. Now, we're on the Eastern Agency of New Mexico. We're doing our very best to help those that are less fortunate. Some of the boxes are going to be set aside. I know there's another question that's going to come up and say, what about those individuals that don't have vehicles? So, we're putting some boxes aside. The C H R is going to go out there and deliver those. And you heard her story earlier, the C H R here. You know, she's going door to door and right on the front lines of helping the people out here. So, let's pray for everybody, pray for all the folks here. I know that Western had a peak a couple of weeks ago. The statistic I got was 30% less emergency room visits. But that doesn't mean Western, you need, you open the communities back up. We can't let down. More cases are being seen in McKinley County, San Juan County. And so, pray for everybody. Pray for our Navajo citizens that are effectively impacted by the virus. God bless you, don't complain, but pray. Maybe we should do a hashtag, right? Hashtag, don't complain, pray for our citizens. We're all in this together, let's help each other out. Ka, nech, da, ho, de, dashni, ta, di, bi, chadi, ka, di, nahan, chne, gi. So, kon, so, she, eh, oh, ke, ndan, iki, ni, do, de, do, atat, so, da, da, zen. Arro, kado, da, nahan, da, neshigi, do, batso, do, zen. Arro, obiga, hada, do, na, ne, ya, ashkona, reski, no, cheni. Ebini, na, eh, yi, jo, ba, de, ni, ke, ra, ha, gan, nda, so, ka. Eh, ya, la, di, ni, itta, ha, da, ona, kon, so, she, ni, itta, ha, si, do, de.
Izigito, kashin, chogo, kade, chah, zon, de, eh, nahan, zicci, do, ke, ha. Chet, chet, lo, shi, ya, sh, adana, shi, ya, sh, edana, so, ah, de, Pavlo Pantano, de, na, ke, ye, go, ta, atah, liya. Um, shik, eh, do, shidane. Ni, de, shid, eh, so, ya, Fowler, eh, da, shidane. Arro, eya, itala, de, na, ta, ni, da, itlen, ja, aj, eh, itcha, um, shik, eh, di, ni, kon, shana, mesi, shi, ne, ha, shi, sabadi. De, ne, lini, ho, nahan, de, ilni, shi, de, es, i, arro, ez, ah. Ya, chen, le, akko. Ah, koi, chi, do, ah, koi, che, eh, ha, shinsogo, kado, eh, nichit, et, nda, ini, ka, le. Ko, ya, at, eh, ho, eya, nas, go, ne, ne, che, na, ne, da, ro, eh, di, ni, do. Nas, go, ne, ne, che, eh, ya, ha, shinsogo, eh, kado, ah, nichi, ke, dan, lini, ya, at, eh, ho, na, da, ke, do, le, da, ni, zen. Akko, nichi, ah, ah, koi, che, eh, ban, da, nichi, ni, ka, le. Akko, shi, eh, di, ma, idai, shki, shni, nshle, arro, thore, chi, ni, eh, bash, shchi, nshle. Ash, che, da, shina, do, thka, ban, eh, da, shchi, ta, eh, stan, nshle. Arro, thod, es, ah, hole, ye, re, eh, is, shi, ke, le. Ko, ha, shinsogo, kado, eh, ya, ho, na, ta, ni, lini, kado, ah, koi, che, ho, nichi, chet, eh, da, hat, ah, do, kon, ha, shinsogo, ho, sabi, zen, dan, da, di, ci. Akko, nichi, na, ant, chi, lini, oh, eh, yo, nichi, eh, da, ha, la, swis, sa, ni, ni, lini. Arro, ne, ilchi, dan, lini, anle, ilchi, ya, je, che, eh, na, hole, ah, ha, shinsogo, da, nichi, ant, chi, le, shik, eh, do, shidane. Akko, de, yes, ho, wa, nahas, ah, ro, eya, nichi, kon, da, bel, kledo, nichi, tes, ke, na, zla, ro, nichi, kon, na, zka, ro, ah, de, eya, se, nichi, na, ant, chi, naha, ha, ha, zlan, le. Eh, bino, na, cha, eh, bina, eya, ha, shinsogo, eya, ce, da, bel, si, na, da, al, ke, thka, de, ti, da, on, da, do, le. Arro, sa, ni, ni, lini, de, ne, ni, lini, ha, shinsogo, chi, ya, il, eh, ah, koi, che, eh, chi, ya, ni, gi, il, do, il, i, ho, ba, ba. Na, che, so, il, zen, do, ya, at, eh, ho, na, ne, da, ro, le, arro, ha, shinsogo, kon, nichi, eh, ol, il, nahan, na, zla, ro, nichi, na, nesh, ho, wa, non, da, nahas, ah, ro, tlo, nahas, ah, na, neshi, gi. Eh, ha, shinsogo, na, ant, chi, oh, eh, yo, bi, bi, dan, te, oh, eh, at, eh, ho, de. Arro, eya, ah, cha, eh, i, ah, je, do, ah, na, ne, te. Akko, de, nahan, al, chi, ne, ye, go, nda, no, chi, shi, ya, je, shi, eh, we, hole, ye, ke, bel, nda, zte, oh. Ha, shinsogo, ke, ta, ah, chedi, ne, ne, nda, do, ya, ke, ta, ah, chedi, ni, da, da, si, tli. Oh, ot, ah, ke, ta, ah, chedi, no, da, sh, ka, ha, ha, ta, nde, son, tes, kes, le. Oh, eh, yo, go, ant, si, il, kes, shik, eh, do, shidane. Di, ko, eh, nichi, lo, ro, ni, li, do, nichi, ah, de, kos, do, jo, ba, i, nahan, chne, i, ha, shinsogo, na, ant, chi, no, at, ah, ni, zmasi, na, ant, chi, ant. Ha, shinsogo, ni, la, tra, da, ki, so, dan, chi, no, ah, ben, dan, chi, ant, chi, do, da, che, tindi, na, la, ah, ben, dan, ben, dan, ben, da, nichi, ni, ti. Akko, ah, ni, ro, dan, chi, ne, shik, eh, do, shidane. Arro, ha, shinsogadi, de, kos, do, itini, de, kos, do, jo, ba, i, be, ez, be, chne, ez, egi, ben, to, ba, egi, ba, ba, at, en, ha, no, da, da, wen, ni. Akko, ndi, shi, ah, nichi, eh, ni, te, il, do, ha, jo, ho, wa, de, si, da, ro, ha, jo, ik, ah, ni, li, oh, she, la, oh, at, eh, ro, le. Akko, ah, ho, na, da, dan, chi, di, ne, ah, ho, dan, chi, dashne, il, do, shi, sa, zi, ro, kon, nahan, ha, ha, san, i, ben, na, dan, chi, di, ne, shik, eh, do, shidane. Akko, di, ha, slango, na,htehi, gi, il, do, ah, ro, ho, ye, go, thato, kha, at, ah, la, da, ah, ho, chi, ya, ho, kha, lo, ya, te, il, do. Arro, di, ze, tega, si, la, chi, shda, dan, lini, arro, di, ha, shinsogo, nichi, chi, do, nichi, ze, ah, be, da, da, des, bali, eh, do, chi, no, shne, ha, na. Di, kon, la, san, ah, shi, di, ho, ne, sa, da, na, asa, sa, da, ro, ho, ne, shi, da, el, chal. Akko, ndi, chne, na, shda, eh, ho, ben, na, shan, le. Akko, da, arro, ha, shinsogo, di, oh, eh, yo, edalia, akko, la, chi, do, il, ni, gi, ah, koi, ah, koi, che, ho, thana, dah, ki, san, da, hll, ni, shoda. Arro, ha, shinsogo, eh, ya, di, kon, tshoitini, cha, ni, ni, gi. Ah, ha, shinsogo, ah, ho, do, chah, ha, shi, ce, nda, be, da, ah, ho, challi, she, i, do, wi, do, chah, da. Eh, na, eh, dan, chi, di, ne, ye, go, ta, atah, liya. Arro, ha, shinsogo, kon, be, hez, ah, ni, cha, da, der, ya, do, be, da, eh, ni, shi. Ashkona, shik, eh, do, shidane. Ha, jo, be, ah, no, li, do, be, eh, no, te. Ha, shino, la, kon, na, ta, ni, da, no, le. Arro, ha, shine, na, kon, ki, ke, da, ha, di, ni. Arro, ha, shino, la, eh, kado, naha, da, ist, ne. Ka, ela, be, eh, ta, ah, chidi, il, so, do, ha, jo, ben, na, ta, ah, chidi, ni, ti. Ah, do, nichi, nichi, nahas, ah, go, ho, jo, ben, da, no, ti, ta, ah, chidi, no, sen, shik, eh, do, shidane. Arro, kon, tsa, la, jo, nda, hll, ni, shi, i, ke, ha, nahan, chi, ne, da, no, li, chi, ya, shi, chela, shi, na, da, da, no, li, do, shi, che, da, da, no, li, shi, may, ya, shi. Ot, ah, ho, na, neshi, gi, nahan, ah, nichi, lak, eh, ya, ni, ba, ah, walliya. Arro, kon, ez, el, i, jo, nda, hll, ni, shi, ez, el, eh, ne, da, no, li, do, ez, eh, nda, kha, hi. Da, in, il, sesi, do, ho, it, li, san, da, kha, hi, gi, ye, go, ta, atah, liya, shik, eh, do, shidane. Arro, ha, shinsogo, ha, shino, la, eh, kon, la, jo, nda, nichi, san, i, ne, le, ho. Ha, shinsogo, na, nesh, ha, lak, eh, so, la, eh, ba, ah, ho, challiya, do, atah, ah, ho, challiya. Oh, eh, yo, nichi, mah, nichi, je, eh, da, dan, le, nichi, ke, dan, le, bel, ho, che, da, dan, le. Nichi, ke, eh, ne, ita, z, ah, at, eh, shik, eh, do, shidane, eh, ban, atah, ah, walliya. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. You may be listed as a non-essential, but we have a right to call you back to work. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it. And then we're going to talk about how to do it.
Jay Chin, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, hey, uh, she could either she could either. Are you seeing that the name of the kid because uh he did it. Uh, she had yet to leave the city. That's it, no, I don't understand that. She had to change it. So I used to hear it. I don't think it's economic development. Uh, what I'll be talking to you guys about this morning is our upcoming elderly day event. Uh, we have an elderly day shopping that will be set up at all of our BASH's locations throughout the Navajo Nation. Uh, what we will be doing on May first, this coming Friday from six AM to ten AM, is we're going to be allowing a timeframe for our elderly, our grandparents, the Nellin, the Masan, and the H A to do their shopping at all of the locations throughout the Navajo Nation. Uh, there's seven of them in Arizona, those are going to be Chinli, Delcon, Keyeta, Pinion, Sanders, Tuba City, and Wonder Rock. And then we have a BASH's location located over in Crown Point, New Mexico. We will be collaborating with the Navajo Nation Shopping Centers Incorporated. Uh, they will be passing out some hand sanitizers as well as our handmade face masks for our elderly population at all of the locations here. And they're also going to be set up over at the city market in Shiprock, New Mexico. So um what we're what we're doing this event for is to try to keep everybody local. We did this last time when we had our first of the month event on April first. Uh, we're doing it again because of the spread of the COVID nineteen throughout the Navajo Nation. Our goal is to help reduce the travel and the spread of the virus throughout the Navajo Nation. And of course, to try to keep people local to their demographics within their communities throughout the Navajo Nation. So what we'll be doing from six in the morning to ten o'clock this coming Friday is that's going to be for our elderly from from the ages of sixty years of age and older. We're going to have representatives at all locations who will be there to help answer questions, who will be there to also pass out much useful information for you on how to shop safely and how to deal with the current epidemic that we're dealing with when it comes to purchasing your essential goods for yourself, for your animals, for your families, and your homes. Um, so this coming Friday, if you have an elder, if you're going to be accompanying them, you're more than welcome to. Or if they can become themselves, that's great. They'll be taking place from six in the morning to ten o'clock at all of the BASH's locations throughout the Navajo Nation. Uh, we really and we are encouraging and you must make sure to be wearing your protective face mask, not only because it's a public health order issued by the Navajo Nation, but the BASH's locations and other shopping places throughout the Navajo Nation uh will not let you into their stores unless you have a protective face mask on. Um, so make sure you have that on, uh, practice your social distancing. And also in in awareness to what we're doing here is that we're, our goal is to keep everybody local when it comes to the first of the month. You know, we've been so used to traveling off reservation to the border towns, to visit Gallup, Farmington, Flagstaff, what have you, because that's what we've always done. We've taken the time to pay bills, to get a good meal, and to buy things that we need in the in the local border towns. But because of what's going on right now with the COVID nineteen, we're really encouraging everybody to stay local, to stay home as much as you can, and to only send one person out shopping to do their essential shopping um for themselves, for their families. But this coming Friday during our elderly day will be specially set aside from from six in the morning to ten o'clock for our elderly population at all of our BASH's locations. So eight, I couldn't just ask these, so I don't know how to do it, I don't know how to do it. Continue to take care of yourselves through this time. Uh, we look forward to a prosperous future here on the Navajo Nation. Yeah.
Good morning, Doiate. Um, she Pearl Yelmen, she, I don't, in Shlini, gee, it's an obvious, in Shlindo, it's a lot of BASH's chin. It's a lot of BASH's chin, I don't know, I don't know. She I N C, I see, twenty minutes, this is a lot of Nasha. I don't, she's a lot of, I'm, she's a lot of, I'm sorry, she, I don't know, she, 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 I don't know. Um, out of the vision of community development, I don't know, I shouldn't. And I'm here to provide an update and also uh very thankful, thankful for our leadership. Here have, she knows, uh, President Jonathan Nez, the Vice President Myron Weiser. I know, here have to our police officers, our medical uh medical experts out on the field, and also to our first responders. Um, we have been fighting all together, a tough fight. And we're very thankful. And throughout the Navajo Nation and throughout the one hundred and ten chapters, we have observed heroes emerging throughout Navajo Nation. We have many who have been donating, contributing, and distributing back out to the community. We have many neighbors who have been checking on each other. And we have local leadership who have been assisting um all the one hundred and ten chapters. We continue to call on your leadership and we continue to call and rely on your services. And we ask that you continue to do those in a safe way. Continue to be safe out on the field and continue to be safe uh at the chapter houses, uh in the community, at the grocery stores, at the post offices. Continue to take care of each other. My uh report is brief here, but uh very important. The Division of Community Development um has been a support system and a wraparound service, so to speak, um to the Health Command Center. As such, the Health Command Center has expanded and has activated the chapter branch. The chapter branch is uh composed of staging posts, uh nine staging posts. These staging posts cover the Thiru area, the Chinli area, the Standing Rock area, the White Cone, Delcon area, the Gennado area, the Nahotso area, Auto Sheep Springs area, San Juan area, and the Tuba City area. It is through these staging posts that the Health Command Center distributes resources and goods and works closely with the C H Rs and the P H Ns to meet the needs of the high need families. Those high need families include elders, positive case families, um some single parents, uh but again, our um high need families and elders. We are working closely with the staging posts. All staging posts have been activated and all resources have been moving. Of course, uh we do run into some challenges and barriers, uh but the staging post leaders um have been problem solvers. Uh, and we appreciate their leadership. We've also been working with the C H Rs and P H Ns who've also been problem solvers, who are finding ways, um safe ways to get resources to the families who are in need. On Monday, under the leadership of Navajo Nation Fire Captain John Williams, all staging posts received safety training. They received a decon training as to how they will decontaminate and clean after certain deliveries at the staging posts. Again, we consider our staging posts and our strike teams uh frontline employees and frontline uh leaders. Uh, we want and look out for their safety and as we assist them in getting deliveries to our high need. I also want to close by saying, um, I'm very thankful for the leadership at the Health Command as well. And also very thankful for the leadership uh with our council delegates, chapter officials, and chapter staff. We've been working closely together, we have to continue to work together and efficiently. I call on your communication and I call on your leadership to continue providing services to the Navajo people. Uh, again, my my report is very brief here, um but we're in this together. And I want to just say, let's keep working hard. Keep working hard in delivering information and being consistent with our information. Continue providing clear communication at the chapter level and continue to work together. Um, so, eh, yeah, I don't, I hear, I don't, I don't know, yeah, take care, take care of each other. Take care, take care of each other. I have family throughout Navajo Nation and I care deeply for all of our Navajo people. So continue to work together, continue to take care of each other. So e de ya from Division of Community Development. I'd like to call on Dr. Jill Jim next heha.
Wanted to say good morning and thank you to everyone. This morning here at the. At the at the Command Center with the Navajo Department of Health. She ya Jill Jimi she'ado look on sho'ta chitni bashischin. Do ishin ito shichito. This one e da shenale aro na disanda I sinasha. I'm here with David Nez, but he had to be out in Chinli today. So I'll be doing a brief report for the Command Center this morning, so. Aro shik edo shedene ka'ha'ke non feditni do na'ko e di Command Center e ka'ha'di. There are di tro'ggo ka'ha'di ben deilnishi di. Di jen do eskado ka'ha'di alternate care site do genigi. Ashon do zekka'ha'di etskosh'ta dozni. etskoshis'ta dozni e ya. Na'ke ka'ha'di inle do do di shiprock de na'ke go'ka. Ka'ha' Army Corps Engineers in da nish. E ko e nichidene, nichidene e ka'ha'di do kosn'tagi. Be da'asna'gi do. Ka'ha'di do a e yisit be'tchodha'anes ke go e ka'ha' alternate care site oljenigi. Ka'ha'di a'jit refer da'no. A'ltshobo. Le tro'denestis do inle winslo da'do aro uta' Navajo da'da'hot. Enegi hota. Navajo area a'ixis ben deil, ben deil nish do six thirty eight ben deil nish. E hota ka'ha'di. Ashon do zekka'ha'di. E I refer da dozni ka'ha'di jenle jia e shon ka'ha'. Fifty beds one e aro shiprock de e forty beds. E ka'ha'di isel ene bila'ndei, bila'ndail nish do hota she. Ashon do zadi etskwon da esnisho do ze ko a dozni inle shiprock di. La e inle, jenle di da'ze e inle. A'la go a'la'and da inisho do edonle. Ko e da'na'. Ka'ha'di tro'ggo da inisiko do zainda etskwa do zedodozni. A dozni e hota ko e di. Health Command Center. Ka'ha' ben deilnishi aro shoi gi e quarantine and isolation ho'leni gi e. Ben deilnishi gi e inle a. A'jit inle di do inle tro'denestis do ka'ha' St. Michael's do winslo de ka'ha'di. Ka'ha'di quarantine and isolation ho'leni gi e di. Nichidene e di de kosn'tagi ka'ha'di. Ka'ha'di bedenel e go'beni ya. Aro bed tes ba'aliago. E e ya yip'asitago da'zato. Do hawa do babi'wa'gogo. Do do behozinda. Di da'zaka'ha'di positive or negative da'zaba'dozni lon. Do hawa ka'ha'di baha'wa'ago e. Ka'ha'di quarantine and isolation do'genigi e ka'ha'. Ba'hot e go a'jit refer ba'dozni. E ka'ha' na'ke go ben deilnish do ka'ha'di isel ene da'aliene do. Ka'ha' a yugo ka'ha'di. Ishtedelne do ben deilnish a'kui jen do ka'ha'di. Alternate care site do quarantine and isolation deilie liki e ka'ha'di. An a ko e n'trago ka'ha' Navajo Housing Authority di do e. Ka'ha'ni ka'ha'liye do ete. E ka'ha' beni natchi she'ka'ha'di in deilne ashon. Ka'ha'di in de kosn'tagi ka'ha'di. Be da'asna aro do do behozin go'ka. Ka'ha'di ba'hasado. E ko'ha'ta'di be'hadesti do a'kui jen do ka'ha'di curfew. Enonadne goshik ka'ha'. Ash'te'na dat ne'ed do aniche. Ka'ha'di. Jia do la'di. Be'ki. O'da da' enegi do tro'ta da'ada'at eni ka'ha'di. etskwade deilinso ka'ha'di. Ho'wande ka'ha'di. Ako. Ho'wande a ita ntiinhallo a ne yeho yilhano'odu wa'to. E beni ya di curfew ho'leni gi. Hota go e ho'wande na'isun, na'isun o'tha. Beni ya ka'ha'di. Ka'ha' stop the spread ho'we'jito behozinda da di no ka'ha'di. Do itin da da do 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 behozinda do he'da. De kosn'tagi behallo go donm'ha'ozin ona. E da'zin na ka'ha'di a yisit a'di na'ahnke da'denne. Do you're out in public do ka'ha'di. A'deshin, you're visiting people go do behozinda le. Hota ayoba hastki kon na ena ka'ha'di. Shelter in place do curfew beni yehalo ka'ha'di. The more you, the more we enforce social distancing no'leni iltah. E beni na ale'adi. Ashon do zada'ka'ha' do birthday parties do he'ita da'any family reunions. Do bana'aldeta. A ishtetna'isot'konto. A do at eh'da ho'wande. Just da do ka'ha'di. A'la ha'altshen da'he'da hek edo a yugo a ya'asi ya'at eh'do a she'bi'wa'ha. Et eh di ko e ba'da'hanitsen. Ena ka'ha'di COVID- nineteen ho'leni. Do ko de kosn'tagi a ita kui dixi. Be'hadetzi ka'ha'di. E hota. Di'the'eda delkosa do he'eda. Ka'ha'di del delkosa belje'ko do. Benada aheltasa do he'ita da. Do bel'at'koneki so da'ita bisilcha ha'na do ha'chin do da'he'eda. Do hala'khati kiso she'eh hota. Ba'delnaha'at eh e beni na. Ka'ha'di kui dixi ka'ha'di etati ne di do di da na'it'ahha'da ka'ha'di. Ha'chin do ha'ze bik eschke'ha' she'do behozin o'di. Ena public health order de'ya'at so. E do a she'hota bik ehtaha ni'no de'ya'at so. Aro a nichida ni'te go she'iltah do t'ah. A'wet'ego ni'le a'kui dixi. Hota behendeitz. A a a nichida ni'te go di. Ka'ha'di bi'ha'di khato, bi'ha'di nall. Do ko e ba'hashtige nihamasando nichidhi do. Aro a do. A ita hoti ne da e ya. Di ko e dene da he'eda be'ixin'le konbeint ini do ishin do. Ita da e ko e high risk group beni ne. A de nichidene do a'lskwa. The United in the United States e ko e do. Di a. Do dene do a da beheldigo. Be'tsisa ya'at eh'opin inhaldo. Hota ek'at. Ena ba'hashtki da di ne do. A nichida da'ha'ylnia do. Niham. Anha'altshena banse de keso be'tchoya de. De ya she'di bik e bik e di kaha'at eh. A de a shchon de deshni do ka'ha'di. Be'tsisa'ha'hyane bik edenshi'i do ka'ha'di Health Command Center e kodo. Nashnish do a'lskwa ka'ha'di in da'ne shidi. Niher sala' do isel en do. Do ka'ha'di do tribal leadership ho'leni do a'lskwan. Ni'ke'ed shik edo shedene do ka'ha'di a'da'na kegi. A'lskwa aheh enke'ide ni do ka'ha'di. Na'sne'ne dixi. Ba'da'ini ilni go de ko'ha' hota a na'sbi'khato. Aheh enfedini do na'ne.